So we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is four thirty P M. And we're September third, two thousand and twenty four, and we're meeting in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. Is Jake online?
He is. Looks like he just turned off.
Okay, so we have all members of the council present. We have Councilman Fitz Yamato online with us. At the table, we have Councilman Norfeld, Councilman Pugh, Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Christensen, and myself. We're also joined at the table with our city manager, Mr. Peely, and our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. We have our minutes of August twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four. I'll turn those minutes to the council for discussion or motion.
Move to approve the minutes of August twenty seventh.
Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those pass. We have our regular meeting this evening. There has been a change on our regular meeting agenda as well as an addition, the addition of a special redevelopment agency agenda, and we'll have Mr. Springmeyer come to the mic and explain this to us.
Good afternoon, Council. Jonathan Springmeyer, Economic Development Director. We've got three agreements on the agenda to vote on in tonight's redevelopment agency special meeting. All pertain to the same subject, which is the sale of the Embassy Suites Hotel. First agreement is for is the PSA, the purchase and sale agreement of the hotel. About thirty-two million dollars, six million to be credited back to the buyer at closing. Hundred thousand dollars in earnest money will be due five days after the agreement is is signed and closing within seventy-five days. The second agreement is a commission agreement for the buyer's agent in the amount of one million and forty thousand, which is four percent of the twenty-six million balance after the after the credit. And the third agreement would be an asset management agreement with Western States to manage the hotel. As of September first, the hotel became ours again. But we need, assuming this agreement takes place, we'll need two and a half, hopefully, months of management agreement with with Western States so that the patrons of the hotel, the operations of the hotel are are seamless and and operations continue on. So a management agreement with Western States, it does. The agreement does have a termination clause built into it, assuming the assuming the sale of this hotel. So any questions regarding these agreements?
Just looking at the agenda online, and it only has two resolutions. I mean, I can see the the fee agreement is is in the documents with the the purchase and sell.
Is it built into just two agreements, Nicole?
The R D A resolution has two agreements or two resolutions, one of which has two agreements attached to it, and then the city council agenda has one item that would just authorize the city to to do what's necessary.
And then in the if we need to do a quitclaim deed or or city facility, city things, we don't have to come back. We can be timely and efficient in moving forward with this closing.
Okay, no more questions? That was pretty easy. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now turn the time to Mr. Pastrick for application Z P Z four twenty dot or twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Mayor Steve Pastrick, Community Development Director. I don't usually use notes, but on this one, I've got notes. So it's got a little more, a little more to it than than usual. So we're going to PowerPoint like normal here. So before I jump into the slides, I want to give a little bit of background first on this, and then we'll we'll jump into the details. So first of all, there you do have a few additional attachments in your packet for this one that go kind of beyond what we would typically see. So first, there is a traffic impact study that's included. The reason for that is whenever you have a project with a hundred units or more, the code requires that, so that's included. There's actually two sets of planning commission minutes because it continued one meeting and had another. So there's and there's a lot of discussion on both of those. There's quite a bit of public input in the form of petitions, emails, online comments. We tried to distill those all into, you know, a few PDFs, but that's all there. Also, the the planning commission actually had requested a presentation from Economic Development looking at just, you know, commercial potential of the property. So that was included as well. That was prepared by Mr. Springmeyer. And then finally, there's also a letter, I think this is important, from the property owner. So there's a letter from the applicant, kind of, you know, pitching their project, but there's also a letter from the owner that explains why they're selling the property. I think that that one's really important because there's just given all all the public comment, I think the the owner's perspective as far as why they're selling is important. I did put together a summary of what I would call distilling all the public comment to a few points. Those are in the meeting minutes, but if if of interest, I can provide those, but I'm guessing you probably have heard some of these comments already, so I'll forego that. So jumping in now to the the actual slides. So the the application we have in front of us is a request to amend the general plan and zoning for this property. So thirty-six eighty-eight South Redwood Road, over twenty-six acres. There's nine properties out together. Of course, we all know this is the Redwood Drive-In as well as the swap meet. Here's the close-up of that. So the zoning on all this currently is C two. The request is to go to the R M zone, and the general plan is general commercial, and the request is to go to medium density residential, which means up to up to twelve units per acre. So that's the request. I think this slide is helpful because, given how big this is, just to kind of understand what's around it. So starting in the northwest corner, you have Granger Elementary, and then working clockwise, you have townhomes to the north, daycare, storage units, and a car wash also to the north. Moving to the east, on the east side of Redwood, you have a commercial strip mall, a vacant parcel that used to be the old carpet barn, mobile home park, and the used car sales on the east side, as well as kind of in that north, first can be southeast corner of the property. Apartments on the south side of thirty-eight hundred, and then a single-family neighborhood to the west, south of Granger Elementary. So you have quite a mix of uses as you look around the property. I think this was a helpful slide for the planning commission also. It it's not readily apparent when you drive down this section of Redwood. So between thirty-fifth and forty first south, the majority use actually is residential, although you don't notice it because oftentimes it's kind of tucked in behind things. There's commercial maybe on the frontage. But when you look at just by land area, it's actually, there's the majority is residential currently. So this is actually the the first concept that was submitted. So I have three here, so I just want to help explain sort of the the genesis behind this, how we got to the latest. So the first proposal, which is what we're looking at, had a total of three hundred and eight units. That density was eleven point seven units to the acre. So the mix there was two hundred and fifty townhomes, forty condos, and eighteen single-family homes. You'll notice in this concept that there is an access to nineteen fifty west, which aligns with the street on the west side of nineteen fifty west. There's also with the the exception of just a little bit of parking like right here, east of the this clubhouse. There's not much other parking aside from just the garages and the driveways. You also have what I call these kind of dead-end stubs here, like here, here, down here. There are several places where those are, those were incorporated. So some of the commentary to this initial concept was that, number one, we don't allow, well, first of all, because we require public streets, we don't allow these kind of dead-end stubs, so those needed to be removed. They were short on parking. So as the council recalls, on on townhomes, we require in addition to the garage and a driveway to parking, you have to have point seven five stalls extra on top of that. So they were short on that. And then also Public Works was concerned about this access and the proximity to thirty-eight hundred south. So in this, the our version two, you'll notice there's a lot more parking now added along the street in pockets here. They get away with those kind of what I call dead-end stubs and then move the access along nineteen fifty to align with the access to Granger Elementary. The the challenge with this one is that despite the fact it added more parking, they were still short of our standard. So in this latest concept here, and this is the the most recent, which actually was not shown to the planning commission. This now has all of the parking or me would meet the parking standards. It's a little bit tough to see here, but what we're looking at here is at the end of each of these blocks on both the north and the south ends, they have parking. And then all along, for example, here, there's parking. So it's a little bit tough to see in this image, but there is a lot of parking kind of added to the side of the street. So in this latest concept, there are now slightly fewer units, so it's three hundred total. Two hundred and forty-four townhomes, forty condos, single or excuse me, sixteen single-family homes, density is eleven point four, so a little bit lower. And one thing I should point out in talking with Public Works is, so they they actually do feel like having a connection to nineteen fifty is important for, just given the number of units here and traffic circulation, it's it's beneficial to have a connection. And again, their preference would be to have it to the north as opposed to the south. Another concern they have is that that because our code requires the parking that it does, they're concerned about snow removal and cars backing onto the will basically be in a situation where if you as as a snowplow is going down the street, you've got driveways on one side and cars on the other. So they are concerned about that. I will say that the way our code is set up, it pretty much sets that up as almost being a requirement because we require public streets and we require the extra parking. So it's kind of a candidly, a bit of a catch twenty-two, I'll say, on that issue. But this is, again, the the latest, the latest concept. One other thing that I think is important to point out different, that's different from what was presented to planning commission is after having gone through planning commission, the original proposal had some requested exceptions in it, like parking reductions. They had asked for an exception on building materials and some architectural features. They've now removed all of those. So the development agreement no longer has those requested exceptions in the agreement. So here are the renderings. So these these condos would be, these are the three-story condos that would be along Redwood Roads. These would just be along the east side of the property facing Redwood Road and have just two different color schemes. These would be the, what I call the rear load or alley load townhomes that are along the south side. So these would be the units facing thirty-eight hundred south. Then there are three different types of units would that would be internal to the project. So they have a variety of what I call front load townhomes, so where the garages are in the front. So this is one style, a second style, and then the third style of the townhomes that would be the bulk of the flats in the center. And then they have a variety of single-family home plans that that would be options along the west side of the property. So these would be homes facing nineteen fifty that would essentially be across the street where you have homes on the west side of nineteen fifty west. Then here's a rendering of what potentially twenty hundred south would look like. So again, you have the units where these are ones where the garages are on the back of the building, so the fronts would face thirty-eight hundred south. This is an image showing what it would look like with an entry feature as you're first coming in off Redwood Road. So that that main block, as you first come in, would be where the clubhouse and the pool and the other amenities would be as you first enter the project. And got some pictures here. And again, I'm sure everyone's familiar. This is looking east along thirty-eight hundred south. This is again, east on thirty-eighth, but on the intersection there at nineteen fifty west. This is the car lot that's there on the corner that's to the southeast of the property. So the corner thirty-eighth and Redwood. This is the, again, what's saying car lot. Always joked it, I'm not sure what was going on with that cow-looking car there, but that's a really interesting paint job for that car. These are the apartments on the south side of thirty-eight hundred. Looking north on Redwood. Another shot along Redwood. South on Redwood. Looking to the southwest, you can see the sign for the drive-up there or drive-in, I should say. West again, this is the car wash directly north of the property. And then this is looking west of the property, a little bit further to the south. And then the last image. Few more things. Sorry, I know this is a bit of a marathon here, but a lot of information on this one. So in the development agreement, again, I won't hit on everything, but just kind of the high point. So there is a the agreement has a cap on the number of units. It establishes minimum sizes for all the different product types. It includes materials, talks about exterior materials, has the renderings for the different product types that we showed. It mentions that in the case of the condos, those would actually exceed the parking because in the case of condos, we just require two spaces per unit, and they actually have an extra space behind the garage that's sort of tanned into the garage that would be in addition to the the two. They outline setbacks for the single-family. They're actually proposing that on the single-family homes, they would install the landscaping and the H O A would maintain the landscaping in the front yards. There's a list of amenities that are provided. So again, I won't read that, but there's a pretty long list of different amenities that are proposed here. Another thing that that we had suggested to staff is that we've had some projects where as they get towards the end of the the project, we have some trouble getting some of the some of the improvements like to the hundred percent finish line. And so what this agreement says is that we have the ability to hold the last thirty units, hold the permits on the last thirty units to make sure that everything actually gets finished. So that's we found that whenever someone can't get a permit, that really holds their feet to the fire. So if there are anything like, you know, they don't finish the clubhouse, or they're missing sidewalks somewhere, or what whatever it is, we can just tell those permits is there's language in here about fencing, some right-of-way dedication. Right now, along thirty-eight hundred south, it's just an integral curb gutter sidewalk. So we're, the agreement also says they would be replacing that with a park strip on thirty-eighth and putting in sidewalk there. We'd be getting along Redwood Road our our streetscapes of the wider park strip and sidewalk along Redwood. And then there's also some language in the agreement about interior features. So things like types of countertops. They have tankless water heaters, just other interior features that they have as standards in their inside their units. So that's not all the details, but hopefully a good overview of what the proposal is about.
Okay, so the council, any questions for discussion?
I I tried to read the traffic study. I'm not sure they wrote it in English.
Tricky to follow sometimes.
Could you summarize the traffic study for us?
Sure. There's really, really one thing that they had suggested in terms of a a change, and that is that as you're heading south on nineteen fifty west, they had recommended some additional right-of-way to add a a turn lane on to thirty-eight hundred south. So that's actually addressed in the development agreement. I mean, there was discussion about, you know, at peak times that things can get busy on Redwood, but where it's already a seven-lane facility, we're we're probably not going to be doing anything with that, and it's a U dot facility. But that was really the main main suggestion they had in terms of change was that additional turn lane on nineteen fifty west.
If you go north on nineteen fifty, there is a light at thirty-fifth, correct?
Correct.
Within the the few comments that you received, do you recall any from the adjacent, the car lot or the car wash or the storage?
I don't actually recall, folks. It seemed like at planning commission, we may have had one person speak that lived nearby, but the vast majority of the folks were people that either had boots at the swap meet or that were patrons of the swap meet.
I somewhere remember the car dealership owner to worried about theft or but our crime with this with the
So the, and that's, I'm glad you mentioned that. So the the owner of the car lot that's right there on the hard corner, I think she was just concerned about how this would impact her property. It was what I recall from the from the discussion.
Steve, I'm a real estate guy, so I welcome normally real estate, more housing in our inner city. But with the the Treasure Isle and the boarding house issue, it really makes me pause on anything new. I'm treasure I with a brand-new subdivision and see how that's turned out. And I see all these townhomes, they have a basement, which could easily be turned into a room that they could rent out and have a boarding room. Any, any thoughts on how we can? So anything we can add to a development agreement that would maybe help us in curbing that? My initial thought is, can we put in there no basements in the townhomes?
So so we could. I know in the past, the council's preference actually has been to to have basements and
Maybe two, until Treasure Isle, I've totally changed my mind.
So and and I think the reason in the past has been that because townhomes are now seen as more, maybe more the entry-level house that someone can maybe afford these days. That that gives them room to kind of grow into and have storage and maybe expand as their family grows. So those have been the reasons in the past, but if if the council's concerned about having basements, that's certainly something we could discuss with the applicant if they're open to not doing basements. I mean, I I know the benefit I I see is just that it definitely adds value, right? It it does create value for the owner and just just higher value for the city to have a basement in a unit. So
Personally, I'd rather them have a basement and use their garage for cars and storage. But I see the other problem. And maybe the limited parking. Only having three stalls might help not have as much rentals, just because you don't have any place to park their cars. I don't know about anybody else, but for me, parking on thirty-eight hundred south should be prohibited. We are public streets should be public streets and not housing parking. So that's one problem I have, especially next to residential where you have kids running out, kicking balls, and all that other fun stuff. So I'd rather have thirty-eight hundred south being no parking. And then how deep are their driveways? Because in those pictures, they look like I could put two of my trucks there, but in real life, nobody ever puts driveways that big.
So the the code requires they be at least eighteen feet, which is the the depth of a parking stall. That's the minimum. It it may be that some of these are bigger than that, but that's the minimum is eighteen feet.
Okay. The picture was made of look like they went forever.
We can make, we can make thirty-eight south no parking without having to make any agreement with them.
Correct, because the so so people already people already park on thirty-eight hundred south as it is, I think, from the apartment complex. But but just so the councils are where the the developers not including in their parking counts, they're not including any parking along the thirty-eighth or nineteen fifty, although it's right now that's available, but it's they're not including that in their numbers.
They are including parking on the public streets inside.
They're not. So so that, and I'm glad you brought that up. It would actually be off the street, and I'll go get to this slide here. So for example, along this edge here, these, it's against the the coloring is not great here, but there are actually stalls along this area here that would be outside of the the pavement width. So you have twenty-nine feet of pavement, and then the stalls would be outside of that.
Pro perpendicular, parallel.
Pro perpendicular. Which when we, so this is about a year or so ago, when when the council required public streets in these kinds of developments, we made that exception to where you could have perpendicular stalls on these kinds of streets.
Steve, I think we need to have one more access on nineteen fifty west nearby thirty-eight hundred south. I know that maybe cause a problem because so close to thirty-eight hundred south, but we need to put the stuff Nearby thirty eight, so I know that maybe cause a problem because so close to thirty eight itself, but we need to put a stop, sorry, or something because. Too many units in here and only two in and out.
So. So there are three. So you have, and it's maybe a little bit tricky. This one, I think they just.
That's when I go to thirty eight of the south.
So there is one on thirty eighth, one on Redwood and then one on nineteen fifty. So there's three access points at least proposed.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to put anything closer on, on nineteen fifty because that, that makes that intersection challenging.
Unless we put a divider that forces everybody north of the light. Because I really see that north one being a concern for the elementary school. Because it empties about halfway into the property of the elementary school. If I look at the map right. I'd rather have a divider so you can only turn north out of that and do it still to the south by thirty eight hundred. If engineering thinks that would work, I'm not an engineer. Or mid block. I don't know. I know they like things to line up, but.
Steve, where are they going to put the snow?
Yeah, that, I think that is, that is one of the concerns from, from public works is that with. Just the nature of the, the number of driveways and the parking stalls, it does, does create a challenge for where, where to put, put snow. Again, this, this is one of the first large projects we've had with these new parking standards. And so you, hopefully you can get a sense here of, um, there, there's a lot of parking here.
I had a question on the, the two car versus three car garage. You have some context around that and. What did that implemented and do we provide many exceptions to that on recent?
Sure. So I can think of one recently that we did an exception and that would be. The, the project on, uh, it's like fifty one, eighty, something west and thirty fifth south. Um, just off of Kiowa Way where those were two car garages instead of three. Uh, we've had the standard for three car garages since, well, probably eightish years. Um, in this case, because these are smaller lot, single family that are proposed along that west side, there's really just not. Enough width to accommodate that. So if, if they were to do. Uh, three car garages, they'd probably have to drop some lots to, to make the lots wide enough to make that happen.
They have a lot, how wide those lots are that they're proposing?
I believe these are forty five to fifty. So they're, they're fairly narrow. Yeah. So they'd have, um, five foot side yard setbacks. On the, on these, so.
No place to store their RV. For the teenager's car. So two things, no place to park for a boarding house. But you might want to, on street parking for the teenagers and everybody else that comes back. That have cars.
Would this be on, is it nineteen?
Fifty.
That's where the. Fourth school.
It's true. And are they, um, is this a for rent project or is this an ownership project?
These are, uh, all for sale. So Edge Homes, uh, does not actually do rental, rental product. They just do for sale product.
Should have a H O A.
There would be, yes.
The HOA would limit the number of rentals.
They have indicated to me that in their other projects, they, they have done that. They have restricted. So as a city. My knowledge, we, we can't restrict people from say buying a unit, living in it and then, you know, for a year and then turning around and renting it. But the HOA does have that ability and they've, they've mentioned to me that that's, that's been their model in other places and they have restrictions on that. Uh, it's just not something that to my knowledge, the city can enforce the HOA would.
Can we put that in a development agreement?
Um, I asked that question. It's the, the tricky part, I think there, and again, I'll, I'll explore this with legal is that. If for whatever reason they don't, again, it, it puts the city in a awkward position of us trying to enforce. If someone has sold it and is now renting it, how do you, how do you undo that? Right? So that's, that's the tough part for the city.
Isn't there something in state law that restricts the city from? Eliminating that too?
That's, that's where I'll, I'll need to check with legal on that, on that question.
Remember when the legislature was trying to control cities? That's, I think, one of the things they put in.
So this is the application on hand for review. It's been, uh, through the process with planning commission and entered discussions around development agreements, development agreements. Have there been any compelling ideas or anything else potentially interesting that had never been fleshed out? Obviously into a formal proposal, but, uh, any other use cases for this particular lot that have been considered or proposed?
So the, the last serious proposal we had was one about three years ago from. A different developer and they also were looking at residential on this property. Um, they had submitted an application. It got to the point where we had scheduled a hearing and we, we got, uh. A similar response in terms of, uh, public commentary. And that particular developer was out of California and this would, this would have been their first project. And given just the, the opposition, they didn't want that, that being their first project in, in Utah. So they pulled out. Um, that's in terms of like actual proposal, like where someone submitted, that's the only other one. Um, as I mentioned, uh, Mr. Springmeyer did put together a presentation for the commission where. He looked at, uh, just demand for retail and just. In this immediate area, we, in, in his presentation, he didn't see a demand for. Retail to the point that could fill up a space like this, given just the size, again, with it being twenty six acres. Uh, it's a very large site. Um, so I don't know if that, that helps.
No commercial fund.
In this proposal, there is no commercial proposed. It's the, so what you see in this image would be the condo, those three story condo buildings would be right along Redwood Road.
So in our general plan review, what did we pick for this property? Was it commercial in the front and residential in the back?
Yeah. So we had, we had, uh, a mix of three things. So it was. Commercial on the front, but more like kind of pad sites, if you will. The, the main bulk of it being medium density, which is what's opposing. And then we had along the west side, some single family kind of, and the idea was a. A transition between the, um, you know, this project and then the, the neighborhood to the west. And I will say, um, so this, I, I've, I've shown you three concepts. There are even more before that. That, that in meeting with the developer, the original proposal had, you know, multifamily going all the way to the edge and we're like, well. Council wanted to have a transition here. So they added, made this change.
Is that we, uh. We might request, uh, the one nearby John Paris, uh, furniture warehouse. Commercial and fund and residential in the back.
Right. There is.
So not far from here. So why don't we do this one same thing with the other one?
That certainly something we could discuss. So we, we've done. I can think of projects, we've done it both ways, right? That, the one you mentioned, it's true. We've got, um. Commercial in the front and then the townhomes are, you know, it's maybe a couple of hundred feet deep. And then you've got, uh, residential behind that. We have other projects where the residential goes right up to the street. So we've, we've done it both ways.
On the way over, um, I think I heard that the majority of comments that were being shared, uh, that's far had mainly been from vendors. Patrons of the current swap meet or theater. Have we made any, uh, additional outreach, um, in the neighborhoods around, that farms or any others to. To see if there would be any additional concerns about what this might look like or how to compatible those other neighborhoods.
So, uh, beyond just the normal noticing we've done, we have not, I know the, the developer, um. In his conversation with the planning commission, did go out and, and talk with some of the neighboring folks. Um, and, and you know, again, addressing some, some fencing and concerns that way, but. At least in his reporting back, and again, just in, in the comments we've received, we just really have not heard. From, from folks in the neighboring communities and at least in terms of negative, negative feedback. Maybe one thing I think is important to point out too, is that, um, that while there were. Many folks that were either vendors or patrons of the swap meet that do live in the city, there were also many that did not live in the city. So.
You know how wide nineteen fifty is?
Thinking maybe a sixty foot right of way, but I'm looking to Dan maybe for a, a correction on that.
It's, it could be a sixty, but it's, uh, it's not got room for three lanes. It's only got room for two lanes.
Right. So it's w- wide enough for two lanes, but not three.
Okay. So on street parking would kind of be a nuisance there.
That, that would be tight. And so there again, I think, again, that, that's something we could discuss in public works. We could potentially sign that as no parking if we wanted to.
So doing that, we might want to. Ask for wider lots and a three car garage. Just to keep, just to have someplace for the cars that will be associated with those homes. Otherwise, soon as you hit your first teenager, you have to move. If you buy them a car or if they buy themselves a car.
Well, couldn't they just park in the neighborhood further west, which would cause this porn problem?
Yeah. That's what I see. The problem is the parking. So I know we've done exceptions, but this one, I think a three car garage would be wise. And we review this next week as well. So they have time to bring this back.
Stall for a car and not storage or rental.
No. But there's no RV parking.
Another space to rent.
Yeah. Well, my thing is. Teenager car or. Uh, one, that truck you use once a month to go to the dump or whatever, or an RV. People like toys. So I just see them being really starter homes only if just a two car garage.
Yeah, those single family home lots are really small. It seems like to me. And are they the standard lot size or?
These would be, again, where this is the RM zone, you certainly, we can have smaller, cause you know, we, our townhomes condos, that kind of thing. Um, but these are, I mean, compared to most lots we have in the city, these are definitely smaller than what's typical.
Like five thousand square feet?
These would be between four and five. Yeah.
That's for the.
Yeah. Because that third garage also gives you more backyard space as well. The width.
It's basically a townhome lot.
They're just not connected.
Yeah, they're just not connected.
Yeah.
Might as well just see townhomes. That's how it's gonna, it's gonna feel that dense.
You know, we're trying to blend it with the subdivision to the south and the west.
They're half the size of the lots across the street.
How many total units do you have?
Three hundred is the total. Maybe just to recap then from based on my notes, make sure I'm captured. So the, your concern about the size, maybe reducing the number of lots on the west side to get. Larger lots that would accommodate a three car garage. Um, if there's a way through a development agreement to maybe restrict the boarding issue. Um, and then also the, the concern about, can we have something in the development agreement? If the HOA is going to limit rentals, could we put that in the development? I think. As far as parking on nineteen fifty and thirty eight hundred, that's just a decision the city can make. It's, they're already our streets. We can, we could already personally parking if we, if we want to.
And then if you can add, um. Some thoughtful discussion about snow removal and where they're going to push it all, or we're going to push it all.
Yeah.
This of course is not the final subdivision.
Correct.
That has to go through a lot of other things.
And then just maybe have an answer from engineering. If we could have that south outlet instead of the north one by the elementary school. But put a divider so you can't turn south, you can only go north. So you could come in from the south, but you can't go out through the south.
So basically i- if, if we shift to the, the access to align with.
Other, other street.
This, so this street here, it would, it would be like this, but you could make a right, but not a left coming out.
Because there won't be a light on thirty eighth, so it's just going to get congested anyway. I just always go to the light no matter what.
So right in, right in, right out.
You can do a whole of it and then they just.
Yeah. Yeah. That's true. But we can do our best to, but I'd rather have the traffic down at this end than up by the elementary school. A fender bender is one thing, hitting a kid is another.
But I'm willing to do, uh, most of the fun a little bit. Do you like the one in North East corner right here?
I know in talking with them, they, um, they're definitely their preference. Well, number one, they're, here are home builders. They don't, this particular developer doesn't do commercial, but yeah. Their preference definitely is to do the entire site as commercial. They just feel that the, um, there's not. There's not sufficient demand for additional commercials. So that's why they're, they're wanting to do everything in residential.
Any other comments? So I'm still thinking Jake or you're good?
There's always comments. There's always still thinking too.
Yeah. Well, we will review it again next week. So if you come up with anything.
That's good. But it, uh, I think my colleague's suggestions here about nineteen fifty and it's a little more palatable to me, palatable. Um, to have that mirrored on both sides of that street. It's that. This is a neighborhood, is a different neighborhood. That lot size piece that you already made note of, I think is. Good for knowledge.
All right. All right. We'll move to. Application Z T eight, twenty twenty four. This is another one from Mr. Pastrick.
So this next item, um, is actually related to the, uh, item that's following it, which is another zone change. So this is a. Uh, fairly straightforward proposal to amend the city's code. So right now in our ordinance, we have what's called a minimum district size for the C three zone. And what that means is. That if, in order to have C three zoning, you have to have at least five acres of property. All in one area. Um, now that doesn't mean that an individual parcel has to be five acres, but you have to have. A collection of properties that are adjacent to one another that would cover those five acres. So we have the same standard in the C two zone. You also have to have five acres. And a few years ago, we had a proposal to say that. Hey, if you've got property that's zoned M or C three, you could include that to meet the. Hey, if you've got property that's zoned M or C-three, you could include that to meet the minimum district size. This proposal is essentially doing the same thing where we're saying, uh, where the applicant is proposing that. Um, that if you have property zoned C-two or M, that could be counted to meet the minimum district size of C-three. So I, I think the reason, uh, the district side was put in place to begin with, which it's been here for as long as I've been here. Is we just didn't wanna, uh, what's referred to as spot zone, something where we have, you know, one small piece of property that's got a zone. And everything else around is something different. And in our view, if you have. Other commercial properties around it, even though it might not be the same zone, it still accomplishes the same objective of not just seeing that one piece of property. So, um, but again, the, the request here is to allow property that's zoned C-two or M to be included. To meet the minimum district size for the C-three.
Okay, now did the applicant come in or is it the city?
This is an, an applicant request, not a city request.
So any questions from the council on this one? So it'll be the public hearing next week. And then the second one that's kind of the same, Z seven dash twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Mary. So same applicant for this one as the previous application, and it'll make sense why they're requesting this. So this. Property is directly north of the Maverick Center. It's a one acre exactly. Uh, the current zoning on this is the M-zone with what's, what's known as the Deco Lake Station overlay zone. And the request is to change it to C-three, uh, without the Deco Lake Station overlays. So just to zoom in here a little bit, you've got. Um, a hotel to the north and west. You have the new apartments that don't show here, but, uh, this is the seven-story apartment building on the hard corner. And then again, the Maverick Center to the south. While not shown in this image, there is a brand-new building on this property, so this is the site plan for that. And it was really built as kind of a flex industrial, uh, building. But the, it's frankly, a, a bit of an odd combination of having the M-zone with the overlay zone. And so, um, what, what they're requesting is to go to the C-three zone, which is more restrictive than the M. But, uh, eliminating the overlay zone gives them a few more tenant options, so they're not proposing to change anything about the building. Uh, and again, this is kind of similar to one we looked at, um, a week ago. In that it's an existing building and just going to the C-three zone gives them more tenant options than what. It exists under the current zoning with the overlay. So this is, uh, you can see the building here looking to the, to the northwest. You can see the hotel out in the distance. This is looking north, so the building on the right are the new apartments, and then the one on the left is the building in question. Uh, this is looking straight north at the building, so again, brand, brand-new building. And you can see the overhead door, so they contemplated, um, some. Uh, industrial users as part of this. This is, um, looking east, so the, the building on the right is the. Backside of the building or the one in question, the, out in the distance, the apartments, and then on the left is the hotel. And then this just shows the, uh, the zone and kind of the immediate area, so the. The gray area here is manufacturing, and so this blue is the property in question. This hatched area is what's left of the overlay zone, which is not much. Uh, then of course, the, the orange is where the apartments would be, and then all the red is the commercial zone to the south. Believe that's the last slide here, so. One other thing I'll point out with this application is. When this property was first developed, there was a development agreement that really got into landscaping. And there's a proposed amendment as part of this, and this was something actually the planning commission recommended. Let me get to this image here. So where you have the overhead doors in this building and there is residential to the east. Um, basically, it's saying that if, um, when work is being done, basically, those doors, right? So they're, they were just worried about potential noise. So essentially, what the development agreement amendment does is to say, the only time these doors would be open is if you're. You know, you have cars coming and going, or you're actively loading or unloading something, otherwise the doors are gonna shut.
Any questions on this application? And they're looking at more automotive uses?
That's one possibility. Right now, the overlay zone prohibits that, but, um, that would be an option here is to have. They have a interesting use that where it's a, a company that, um. Manufacturers parts for vehicles, but also will do kind of custom jobs. So it was kind of one of those that was. Kind of bled in between industrial and auto uses, and so it wasn't really more of a traditional auto repair use, but technically still. By definition was, but that gives them the ability to have a, a company like that that does more custom-type work. Uh, where it's kind of a cross between industrial and, and service on vehicles.
So kind of an upfitting? No questions on this one? Okay, thank you so much. The Mr. Pastrick show is over. All right, well, now turn the time to Mr. Johnson for a grant agreement.
Good afternoon. You may recall a few months or two ago, we came to the council with the resolution requesting authorization to purchase a couple of pieces of equipment. An aerial lift, a towable boom lift, and a, uh, a Kubota tractor for use by Operation My Hometown. And we mentioned at that time that there was a generous donor that had made a donation to the city, and this is the execution of that agreement. So this is an agreement with the City Strong Foundation. Which will give the city sixty thousand dollars toward the purchase of that equipment. And, um, and we will continue to allow Operation My Hometown to use that equipment and, um. And as you'll recall, the city council author, also authorized, uh, I believe a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the, uh, in this current fiscal year. For the purchase of equipment, and so we're working with Craig Thomas, they, to identify any potential other needs that, that Operation My Hometown may need. Um, but if there are beyond this, that extra money will just remain unspent then. But are there questions regarding this agreement?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we'll now turn the time over to Mr. Cushing. Change order to an agreement.
Thank you, Ken Cushing, Information Technology. Um, Island is the company that, uh, makes. The OnBase, which is the document management system that the city uses across all the departments for. For many different things. You're probably each familiar with the name because of the agenda management that's used as part of that si- system. That's a very small part of it. I mean, there's six million plus documents that are stored in that system across departments, um. And, and it's used for many different workflows and, and. Different uses for different departments, but, um, the, when we initially. Uh, looked at doing an upgrade, which we do about every two or three years, we do an upgrade to OnBase to stay up to date and. Make sure we have all the latest, uh, security features and, um, and that we're not too falling behind, um. We, we've had OnBase do that in the past, just because we integrate with multiple systems and we have multiple modules with them that. Operate on different servers, communicate with each other, and it's just very complex. And rather than risk having downtime, trying to do that upgrade ourselves, we've always had them do it. So, um, just with, uh. Preparation over time, this one just squeaked over that thirty thousand mark for the first time, so to do that upgrade, um. We, the reason it's a change agreement is we looked, first looked at. Doing, doing it through consulting hours and doing more of the upgrade ourselves, but ultimately decided it was best to have them do it, so that's why it's a. Change order and that cost together with change agreement just brings it over that thirty thousand, so. Is there any questions?
Not saying any, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now turn the time to Ms. Kamic.
Our new member of the committee. Yep, so actually, um, Councilman Norville recommend this, recommended this gentleman to join the audit committee. Um, Jim met with him and feels like he would be a great fit, um, so we're just recommending that he fulfill the remaining term of this Angela McConkey. Who, um, resigned some time ago, so.
Yeah, it's been about a year that we've been missing. Resident member of our audit committee.
So is he gonna try it out and then stay for another four or?
I hope he goes stay.
He'll have to bring really good treats to Larry back. His resume looked or his info bio looked really good, so.
He's a good man.
Anybody else have questions?
For the audit review committee, what's the typical meeting cadence or time commitment for a resident that would like to?
It's three or four meetings a year. We never meet for more than an hour.
So, um, with those three resolutions. Would there be an objection to adding them to our consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll just move those to our consent agenda. Okay, um. Our communications, our follow-up, our first one is our meeting schedule. And Ms. Kamic sent out the schedules of other cities. And I think she's just looking for guidance, if you want to change or stay how we are. So turn it to the council for discussion. Hudson Sandy are really the only ones that still do four a month, other than us. Depending on what their scheduling is, what the need is. Majority seems to just do two meetings a month.
If I'm recalling our discussions here, there, there wasn't super strong opinion one way or the other, but two main concerns. One was, are we allowing adequate? Opportunity for public comment? The other was, um, would a change in the cadence of meetings potentially interrupt or? Uh, or delay certain operational kinds of decision-making? I think in both cases. There's ways to say that it would, right? I mean, we can always call an emergency meeting if needed, or we can always, um, add things on to. Add a meeting on the calendar that might not have been there in one of the off weeks that, um. I, I wouldn't be opposed to looking at that change, so long as we had some kind of a public input. Mechanism, even if it was a one question on the website, just that, hey, would this be a deal breaker? If we get to two meetings a month or three meetings a month or something? Not known for having real, you know, boisterous input, but I think as a, at least. I want to say as a formality, but at least as contribution to decisions. You know, at least get some amount of input from, from the city in one way or another to inform them. But I, yeah, if it doesn't interrupt and people still feel like they have other avenues to voice their concerns. I wouldn't be opposed to looking at adjusting it.
Hmm, one of the concerns I heard staff said. Lengthen out the time. So many zone changes and applications, but. An extra week, I don't think would break their schedule either.
Well, for the big zone changes, we're having two weeks of study for it anyway.
We haven't had a whole lot of them coming in, and we can study meeting to. As of the next week's agenda.
We had a big one, though, we could, sorry to.
Yeah, but that might give them, you know, like bring four or four in time rather than one.
If they had another meeting, if we had a big zone change that we wanted to get done by the end of the month.
Yeah. I've, I've been hesitant to, to reduce the number of meetings, but looking at this list and. And, and considering that, that. If, uh, if we're finding that the, the, you know, mo- most of the time we need is in the study meetings. And if we find that we need more time, it wouldn't be hard to add a study meeting, which wouldn't keep staff. Yeah, I think that could go to two meetings a month.
If we do it for six months and it's, and it's not functional or it doesn't work, or we realize, oh, there's some unintended consequences. Flip it back, try it out, but. But I'd still like to see us at least do some kind of outreach to ask of the city, because one of the big functions is. Public comment or interface with city leaders and. Should at least ask. But the people who come are, are here, so, but still. Changing it and see how it goes and.
I think the second and fourth would be better, just because we seem to have, you know, elections are the first. Tuesday usually.
Our neighborhood night out. Which we don't have the umbrellas.
I'll just note too that, um, when I was doing the research, there were a lot of cities that around budget time. Would have additional meetings that they, they worked in just to make sure that we accommodate everything. Not easy enough to schedule. Um, I would just coordinate with, with Jim's team, make sure we have meeting nights when they're, when the budget actions are required, so.
Because the auditors, I mean, the county determines that night, right?
Right.
No matter what our schedule is, they tell us one night we have that meeting.
Yeah, so I would make sure that we, we would have those.
Yeah, after six and a certain Tuesday. Um, that and. If we had one of these that, um, needed the two-week study session review, we could still meet for that. Other one, if it was a pressing timeline.
Yeah, two studies.
Two study meetings and then have it at the regular.
Like the.
Like this. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And are those only on development agreements?
That's the only time that we do that.
Yeah.
And, you know, we can also do it where if, if the councils, you know, and I can talk about this with, with Steve too. Um, but maybe, you know, you do a zone change and it's pretty straightforward. There's a development agreement tied to it, but maybe it doesn't always need that two-week review. I mean. Because then we could just still answer any questions you have in the interim, but if there's a bigger one where. You know, there's maybe changes the council wants to see, it'd be easy enough to schedule a special meeting so that we can bring that back to the session. Yeah. So there's definitely ways around that one too, so.
So don't fill up your Tuesday nights, you're still on call. Basically is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, for those, for those zone changes or general plan zone changes, or if there's any, like you said, pressing matters. Scheduling special meetings are, are easy, yeah, they're simple.
Okay. So I hear one person asking for community input. Russ Phil up there, or you want to just switch?
Same, I'm supporting my trial run.
Community input like James said, could just be a question on the website. I don't want to read a hundred and thirty-two pages of people from. Beaumont, Texas, and everything else telling me how to vote here.
Could even be a prospect. We are anticipating or we are planning on moving this.
Yeah.
Anything, anyone has, we might take into consideration. Now, seems like we're headed in that direction. I'm okay with that line of phrase. I can I can agree with with the Councilman DC Manu, but I think also the other side of that is. We could change and they can come and vote comment and voice their thoughts and opinions at any time.
Or through email.
Or email, I mean, it's. It's not like we're not accessible. And those that do come, I'm sure will will talk to us tonight about it. But, yeah, so. I I don't need it. We have accessibility for the public.
Would the council be okay if if everyone chooses to do this, if we started maybe Oc- October, just so we can get through kind of what we've got scheduled? September, then. Start giving a try.
But and that gives the public.
Right.
September to make comment too.
Right.
Yeah.
But for next. Can we alter the starting time for the Westlake?
Oh, there's a Westlake. Ribbon cutting for the new junior high. So do you wanna field trip over there first? Call it a field trip, everybody could go over there and then show up here at five. Is next week's agenda?
Just one item.
Just one item anyway?
Yep, that's kind of what we have planned, the the red with drive-in item.
Okay.
So it it.
So maybe five thirty?
Yeah, we can, we can do whatever time.
Us, they'll be at the ribbon cutting. I'm learning how to set aside two hours. Cause I don't always start on time.
So five, five thirty week. And then October, we'll try second and fourth Wednesdays, is that correct? Yeah, no.
In a few years.
Yeah.
And then I'll I'll amend my request as well in that now that we're ha- we have a month buffer.
Okay.
I think I'll be okay with as long as we have an additional noticing beyond just the regular agendas and that type of thing. Something on the website, something on Facebook.
I'll have to amend the the annual meeting schedule as well, so maybe I can work with Sam's group on. Hosting the new schedule somewhere so that the word's out there for our residents.
I could be okay with that.
Okay.
Okay. Um then we have. The tattoo estash- establishment conversation. Was anybody opposed to the suggestion suggested changes to the code on that one?
And just to clarify, that would be to extend then uh from where it is currently uh to any space that is or zone. Um that's currently. Business area that's owned for. As the tuition, those type, right? I I don't know what that's called. Anything C one or C two.
C one or C two.
Yeah, so any commercial area. Thank you. Unless there's anything compelling from staff or any horror stories we've had in the past. See any reason why I would vote against that.
Yeah, I wouldn't have known that. Behind door number, whatever, at the so- the salon complex I go to, because there's a different, you know. All different kinds of businesses in there that are to do with. Air and coloring and air removal and everything, I would never have known there was a tattoo one in there. Until I started reading all the actual doors. So they don't look any different than just the girl that cut your hair or the guy that cut your, the barber, so. Okay, so staff can bring back uh uh organs for us, change. I don't hear any objection to that.
We don't know if you're going in for a haircut or a tattoo, Mayor.
Already have tattoo that you can see right now and you probably don't know it. Hey, limousine and commercial vehicles, turn the time over to Mr. Bunderson.
Mayor, Councilor Eric Bunderson, City Attorney, there were a couple. Um concerns that the council brought up over the last couple months uh. Specifically concerning some tow trucks and so and and a limousine, one. Limousine in particular now, um the police have been out and the tow trucks that uh. Were discussed, we believe are prohibited vehicles under the current code. And um my understanding is they have been cited, that leaves the limousine, which is not a currently prohibited. Commercial vehicle, I remember we went the rounds on this a couple, was it a couple of years ago? Yeah, it would, um where we talked about the trucks and we and and we kind of set everything up. And what we did at the time was to make it fairer. Between the the home businesses parking the vehicles in their driveways and the streets as we kind of made all those things. Um the same, so commercial vehicle like a truck a- above a certain gross vehicle weight ratio rating um. You couldn't park in the driveway but not the street or vice versa. That's all just a prologue to this, so we don't have limousine in our code. Um there is a state definition of limousine, which I've got on the screen here, this is actually from the alcohol code. Um it's the only place I could find a decent definition, um and I guess the idea would be. You can, people can drink in the back of a limousine as long as it's defined like this. I think we could do something very similar to this uh where uh we define a limousine. As as a vehicle that's actually licensed to do. Uh like motor carrier stuff and then has a partition down the middle. Um I think this would address the issue that we had with the semi trucks, which was occasionally people will um. And and I'm not judging, but people will get like a a big commercial vehicle for their own private use, uh they do that with semi trucks. Someone might do that with a limousine. So if we defined it like this, it would be like a real limousine that we would prohibit, and then we would need to decide. Whether we want to prohibit it from both parking in the streets and in people's driveways. So I I that's a short presentation, but that is, that is my uh. Um that is the information that I've gathered now. I will tell you one other thing, in checking with the police, we don't have a ton of complaints about. Um limousines parked in the streets or on the driveways, it's not been a a huge problem, we have the one. Um which brought this up, but that's kind of where we are.
The one may not have even been on anybody's radar until. It's next to Treasure Isles.
Yeah.
So do you know how what the length is on a limousine?
I don't, I that that was the hard part when I started to look this up and why I ended up on the state definition because, you know. The the. The ways that they can build limousines, you can have those giant Hummer ones that that or just uh basically a stretched out town car. And so I don't, I mean, that would be another way we could tackle it is just by vehicle length. Or 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 both.
Partitioned or if it was over twenty-three feet or whatever, I don't know what.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we could, that's certainly something we could do as well, add add a length to it, I'd have to do some more um limousine research. Don't look at my P cards.
So I'm trying to understand what the problem is, what, why would we not want limousines in residential areas?
Why would we want limousines in residence areas? For me, it's more um. Around the safety issue when we talk about size and length, so I'm I'm less. At to wanna say, okay, tow trucks or limousines or box trucks, because that's singling out specific. Potentially singling out individuals or industries or lines of work, whereas if we just said, well, if you're longer than twenty feet, bro, sorry. Like, I think that's an easier approach for me for looking at a safety issue, but um. Rather than actual use of that vehicle, just it's a big vehicle. And I don't know if that gets to what we're talking about too.
I have three rollback. Tow trucks that are parked in my neighborhood. One right on Fortieth.
Yeah.
He's pulled up almost to his fence across the sidewalk to try to get far enough off the street to. Let traffic on Fortieth Pass. Where he parks around the corner on Continental and it's, you know, you come around the corner and bingo, there's a flatbed right in front of you. And so that's and I police gun out. Fits all the weight requirements and everything else for residential street. As long as he's empty. That's the only time he parks, but. So I've learned to live with it, but I. I'd rather see it. That's the 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 safety part of it to me.
If you park a big limousine in front of a boarding house, maybe you avoid three cars parking in front of you. That's how we solve. We just fill up the streets with mimos.
I I know when I went to the uh funeral Friday Saturdays. They had the family car there. And it was six doors. You know, it was longer walk around it than most other cars, but. You know, that one, I know they parked off road whenever they can.
And I know there's a subdivision that has tow trucks. The the residents there have a couple of tow trucks, but then there are also. Cars that they seem to tow and then park in the street for days, you know, and so the street becomes kind of. It it appears, I don't know for sure, but it appears that um it's part of their yard. You know, their tow towing yard, so.
And I and I will say that our parking guys are out there all the time because I I still see the appeals. Come up and and they catch those as often as they can, you know, we're marking tires and we're and we're. You know, doing his best, they they're doing his best they can and and um but I think it happens a lot.
But for me, I think the. Larger vehicles, limos and other long vehicles just amplify the on-street parking. And if we put some restriction on it, it's not, we're not. Affecting families that have teenagers because typically teenager isn't going to drive that vehicle, so. It's just another. Arrow in her quiver to try to alleviate the street.
I know a four-door full bed F one or F three fifty is about twenty-three, twenty-four feet long, so. That's just a normal family car. Literally. So. All the things. So I guess the question is, do you want staff to try to write up a proposal, is there enough? People that want one to worry about it on limousines?
And to follow up to that as well, you want it to be both. Off-street parking for home businesses and on the street.
I think to go with with um Will's comment, if you have it allowed on in the driveway. That's just going to push normal driveway cars to the road, so if we're trying to leave the parking issue. I'm gonna get rid of the big limousines.
If you get rid of the limos, that's more spaces for the boarders to to.
The only way to solve it is. No speed parking overnight. The only way I figured it out.
Then we create other problems for for good law-abiding residents.
We'll do a grant program for um some, you know, they can pave their their yard for more cement. Get our Westside Opportunity Scholars to invent the hoverboards and stuff.
I'm still here, David, we don't have flying cars yet, so the Jetsons promised to back. Are there enough of you that want to move forward with this?
I believe this house to have the limousine in the. That business. Yeah.
Like a business license, so you have to. Is there part of part of that talks about parking and?
If it is, if it's based out of the, if it's based out of the home, yeah, I think that, I'm not, and that's what we're talking about with the. You know, the parking on the driveway, so.
Or on the street next to the driveway, you know.
You know, that's in the business license. Why I had to provide. Space for parking for these one. One car.
Yeah, it's just if someone were to, I don't know if a limousine is a home business, uh I'd have to check into that, but. It's certainly not prohibited uh parking as it stands right now in our code.
Well, thanks, Mayor, just while you're thinking about it. Eric and I have talked about this, I mean, as recent as today, and I I didn't really think about it until now, but the definition. Limousine definition, uh technically you do have limousines that aren't stretch. And those are regular cars, which is the. And so, yeah, so when you're when you're thinking about that. If it really is the size, as Councilor Fitzmaule mentioned, the length, then it should probably be something addressing the length because. You know, even the more popular, I mean, back in the day, I think there were, it was a lot more popular with the actual limousines, now you have. It's really Suburbans and luxury Escalades that are taking the place of what typically limousines used to service. And so we're, if we're thinking just trying to curb the the stretch limousines. Then even this definition, I mean, we. We can't just use limousine as a restriction, we'll have to, we'll have to go off of length. Because what we're specifically talking about is stretch limos, not just regular limousines. So whatever we decide to do, I think we. Just using the limousine definition isn't gonna resolve anything.
When I was a boy, we had a. International vehicle, which is a. Which had uh four doors on each side and five rows of of seats, so we could all have a window seat. And that was our family car. It was long. But we we never ran over anybody, so.
Did you park in the driveway?
Yeah, I think it was mostly on the street.
And it was too long for the driveways.
My nephew had one, he bought a an old used limousine and. If for reached it for his family. Was able to park it in his driveway. Care of you, there is a lot of traffic anyways, so. But he certainly. Had fun on vacations.
When we had that, we had a single lane driveway with a carport, no garage. Police car would fuck in the trap. Police car would fuck in that trap.
It's true.
So I didn't see enough appetite to move this forward. Am I wrong?
I would have. Appetite's the wrong word, but I'd be okay with looking at this. Finding out where this might fit in with what we already currently have going around. Distance from driveways, length, box truck, weight, all these things that we've been talking about, is there a way that this shits into any of that? I think would be cool, but singling out a a particular business line or type of vehicle.
Yeah, I think. I I what we'd have to do is um because we have all those others listed under the gross vehicle weight rating. Um because that was the, that was the easiest way to do it, and and that's been very effective. Uh what we would have to do is. Look into then the length of vehicles, and I'm not saying we can't do that because we can, I think where we'll get into trouble. Is defining where the end of a F three-fifty extended cab family vehicle versus a um. You know, a a a stretch limo or something like that, but yeah, I'm I. Yeah, yeah. I I happy to do a little more research on that and bring it back to the council.
I think with that, we have enough appetite for that. Thank you. All right, was there any concerns with the council calendar? All right, we'll move on to potential future agenda items. Okay, council reports.
Yeah. Yeah, I did attend the. Senator Maine's funeral on Saturday. Under high school. Well attended.
Well, you haven't been to our Polynesian funeral. You'd make an hour and a half long.
She will be masked.
Just the Chamber West, yeah, well. Dolly was there.
It was well attended as well. Hey.
I have a report, sorry, and this may not be a potential future agenda item either, but um. Mr. Curtis had raised in a previous, I don't know if it was last week or the week before, the issue about air brakes, and I know we've discussed that here. And there's been clear communication about the. Overlap or. Jurisdiction, right, over, um yes, we already have an ordinance in place, but. Um it's really up to UDOT whether or not to enforce that based on their own safety. Assessment, which they've done, and they're saying, no, they're not gonna do that, so I wonder if there's. And I know our website would just. Keep uh having lots of hidden corners, that we just keep adding information everywhere, but. I guess just being able to to have a. An answer for folks, one of what the current state is. But then maybe we have a cadence, so we can say like, yeah, once a year we go to UDOT and we complain again. And we ask them for another assessment or something. I don't know, or or are we just eternally gonna be battling UDOT on this same issue, you know?
We can probably ask for a report from Dan as to. How often he does talk to him, if they budge at all.
Yeah, because I know that was revisited even as recently as June, and I got a really cool explanation of how that all works, so. I'm able to email Darrow and be like, hey, this is where it's at and, you know, but um. I think that's only gonna become a more frequent. Right, complaint or words as we continue to grow up that way. Those complaints are not gonna lessen.
Seeing no other, we do have need for a closed session for deployment of security. Someone could make that motion.
Join this meeting and go into a closed session. Concerning. Security employment. And take no action. Following that session. If you're in that session.
Okay, we have a first and a second, Ms. Kammick. Councilman Pity Smannu. Councilman Westone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hugh.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norville. And Mayor Lang.
Yes.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break and. Thank you for everybody that came, and we'll see you on the regular meeting.